I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, will call the roll?
Counselor Vido, absent Counselor Abuzaneda.
Present.
Counselor Recupero. Present. Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vega Maldonado.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Present.
And Counselor Zaver.
Present.
Ten members present, you have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Well, welcome back, everybody. This is our first, uh, yeah. Our first, uh, all in-person, no-remote meeting. And, uh, I usually don't say anything, but I think we should just, uh, take notice of, uh, what this city went through and that, uh, we're finally getting them back in a good place. And it's great to see all my colleagues back up here. So with that, I'd like to, Clerk, to introduce the first item on our agenda, the resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson.
Resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson, all members of the Chelsea City Council, Juneteenth in the United States, whereas news of the end of slavery did not reach the frontier areas of the United States, in particular, the state of Texas and the other southwestern states, until months after the conclusion of the Civil War, more than two and a half years after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863. And whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas with news that the Civil War had ended and that the enslaved were free. Whereas Juneteenth became a holiday within southwestern states commonly known as Juneteenth Independence Day, the word "Juneteenth" resulted from words "June 19th" merged together in speech. And whereas this day is an opportunity for people to celebrate freedom and equal rights in the United States, these celebrations range from religious events, rodeos, barbecues, cookouts, neighborhoods, block parties, et cetera. Whereas on Juneteenth, certain foods became popular and subsequently synonymous at the celebrations, such as strawberry soda pop. At barbecue, special dishes were prepared, such as collard greens, cornbread, and meats, including lamb, pork, and beef, meats were not so easily accessible. And whereas the Juneteenth flag was created by Ben Haste, founder of National Juneteenth Celebration Foundation in 1997, and later revised in 2000 to what we now know, the star represents Texas and the starburst represents all 50 states. The YAC represents a new horizon, and finally, the colors represent the American flag, a reminder that slaves were and are American. And whereas Juneteenth is celebrated all over the world, including but not limited to Ghana, Honduras, Japan, Taiwan, Trinidad, and Tobago, and whereas on June 24, 2020, the governor of Massachusetts signed a bill recognizing Juneteenth as a state holiday. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Chelsea and the Chelsea City Council recognize June 19, 2021, as Juneteenth, and continue to support the nationwide celebration of Juneteenth Independence Day throughout the United States of America.
Wish the council, Counselor Robinson.
This unanimously under suspension. And just briefly, that Fatima, along with her sister Monica, who's been doing work with the Latimer Society on a celebration coming up in September on the 173rd birthday of Louis Latimer, along with my brother and myself, we will be presenting the flag to the Chelsea Black community at some point over the next two weeks. Just thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I just want to reiterate, it's a great time that we get together and celebrate the, um, Juneteenth Day. Since 2013, they actually been celebrating it, recognizing it now as a national holiday. So a lot of folks now are putting all these great events together. Last year, it was not, I, there was a lot of virtual events, um, last year that we, um, participated, I participated in. But it's just really a remarkable time that we can look back in our history and see this was the beginning of the ending of the slavery in the United States. So, um, if you're not aware of it, it's interesting just to really start looking into it. It's another piece of history that we should be aware of. Thank you.
Any speakers? Seeing none, that item is passed under suspension. We'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, a resolution introduced by Counselor Garcia regarding Pride Month, whereas individuals who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, transgender, and queer, LGBTQ+, include individuals from all states, the District of Columbia, and all nations of the world, including those from all faiths, races, national origins, socioeconomic statuses, and education levels, abilities, and political beliefs. And whereas the LGBTQ+ people in the United States have made and continue to make vital contributions and transformational changes within the United States and in the world, and where the LGBTQ+ people in the United States serve and have served the United States Army, Coast Guard, Navy, Armed Forces, Marines, and other national service organization, organizations honorably and with distinction and bravery. Whereas LGBTQ people in the United States have fought for equal treatment, dignity, equity, and respect, and have achieved significant milestones ensuring the future generations of LGBTQ+ people in the United States and in the world, and will enjoy a more equitable and just society. And whereas despite experiencing marginalization and discrimination in the United States and elsewhere, LGBTQ+ people continue to celebrate their identities, build community, share love, and actively contribute to the United States and nations of the world through a myriad of expressions of pride. And whereas the Chelsea LGBTQ Coalition raised a pride flag for a fifth year in a row in Chelsea Square on Friday at 6:30 PM in celebration of LGBTQ Pride Month, and now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, officially recognize June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month and celebrate and support the LGBTQ community in Chelsea and beyond. Counselor Garcia.
I make a motion to adopt unanimously under suspension. If there are no objections, then I wish to speak on it.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wow, I am happily overwhelmed to see such a packed room tonight, um, and it feels great. But also, I want to take this moment to, to really point out that last Friday was an absolutely beautiful evening where Chelsea residents gathered for what seemed the first time in a public event, where we had the opportunity to share and really take pride and joy to join our, um, our LGBTQ community here in Chelsea in not only raising the flag for the, for the fifth year in a row, but really enjoying ourselves in such a public space for such a great cause. So I like to really, uh, point out and highlight the incredible MC Sergeant Chung, who was incredible in sharing her personal story, um, in, in her process and her journey. Also, Chelsea Prosper's Friday Night Pop-Up Events by the City of Chelsea, who has been so kind and facilitating many of these events. Um, also, the amazing guest performance we had from Veronica Van der Snatch. It was an incredible evening. It was wonderful to see many of my colleagues there, but it was beautiful to unite as a group to celebrate Pride Month, and I hope that this month goes beyond and that we continue to honor and really embrace our LGBTQ community. So thank you, everyone who attended, and I hope to continue to see more of you supporting our community. Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just quickly, want to say it was great to be out there this past weekend. Um, we had forecast for a lot of rain and a lot of storm, and we had a beautiful sunny evening, and as Counselor Garcia stated, it was many of us as elected officials who were there. But it's great just to be able to stand up and talk about, um, this Pride Month. As, um, some of you may know, if you're a little old like me, in 1970s, in the 70s, where it really started out, and it was really kind of hidden, but through the years, it's really come out. People now feel comfortable coming out, telling about who they are, what they are. They're our family members, they're our sisters and brothers, cousins, aunts, uncles, and it's great to just have the LGBT community come out and celebrate. We had a wonderful, wonderful time. Uh, there's a lot of performers out there. I'll be remiss if we forget to speak of Matt Frank, who has been spearheading and doing a wonderful job with the community. And it was great to see, you know, folks to go out there and support folks openly by being there. You were participating, you were enjoying, you were listening. And most of us, if you were there for the first time, you were probably learning something. You were learning that it's okay to embrace and be around folks that you thought were maybe taboo, but you know, that's the ignorance we had years ago. But that's why I say since 1970, it's come such a long way. So in 2021, we stand and we celebrate, and we here, we embrace our community here because we have folks, um, from that community and our community. They're loving, they're kind, they're generous, and they're also a part of us. So we just want to make sure everyone in our community feel well, welcome, and warm, and cared for. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other speakers? Seeing none, um, that motion passes, that, rather, that resolution passes under suspension unanimously. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, we have a resolution introduced by Counselor Garcia regarding William Tuck Willis. Whereas William Tuck Willis has lived in Chelsea for over 40 years, Mr. Willis has spent almost every single one of those years organizing various initiatives to improve the neighborhood and community he calls home. And where Willis developed his expertise in building renovation and rehabilitation at Yale University, where he studied and completed two degrees in architecture with specialization in architectural history. His love for buildings and the stories they tell eventually led him to Chelsea, Massachusetts. And in the 1970s, Willis purchased an unhabitable, unhabitable, derelict building on Marginal Street that he trained his eyes as a beautiful house and built it in classical revival style. And with the help of some of his students from the Art Institute of Boston, Willis beautified his home and chose to solidify his roots in Chelsea, Mass, accompanied by his wife, where he became a pioneer in affordable housing and the most long-tenured member of the Chelsea's Planning Board. Mr. Willis joined the Chelsea Association to Save Homes, CASH, and the Chelsea Neighborhood Housing Services, CNHS, organizations as a board member to help with neighborhood rehabilitation initiatives. The name of the organization changed over the years, and we all know it now, and the name of the neighborhood developers, TND. Mr. Willis served for over 40 years and recently retired on Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. During his tenure as a board member of TND, he helped set up the initiatives to provide property owners with low-interest loans to pay for renovations, even offering additional supervision to ward off contractors seeking to scam their clients. Mr. Willis's vision helped solve TND's mission to now offer affordable homes to numerous families. Current Executive Director of TND notes, "Tuck is the Cal Ripken Jr. of nonprofit boards and municipal communities." He consistently and humbly served on TND's board, quietly helping to guide and grow TND from its small beginnings to the effective organization it is now. Whereas permitting and land use director John DePries asserts, "Tuck's passion to serve this community and willingness to pass on his knowledge to incoming board members of the planning board while amusing them with his dry humor." Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Chelsea recognizes and appreciates William Tuck Willis, earnest dedication to the mission of making Chelsea beautiful and affordable for families. Counselor Garcia.
I wish to adopt unanimously under suspension. If there are no objections, then I wish to speak on it.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so this is a beautiful example of what happens when you choose to make Chelsea your home and really be invested in this community. I had the opportunity, and as many of you may already know, Mr. Willis has served in our planning board for years, and he has seen over and over again, he has heard the stories of many residents and many projects that have come upon our city, um, and he's really offered his intellect into that. But beyond that, he has also invested himself in really contributing in other areas that this city really needs help with, and, and that includes affordable homes and offering affordable homes in our communities that we know, uh, we just don't have enough of. So, um, I want to take this opportunity, I know that Mr. Willis is watching along with his wife, they're joining us virtually today. We, I really want to take, take the opportunity on behalf of the council and myself and our community to thank you for your long years of service, not only to our planning board, which you continue to, to sit, but also for helping a leading nonprofit like the Neighborhood Developers and helping us with this mission of providing affordable homes in our community. So thank you so much for, for your service, for really beautifying your community and, and being an agent of change here. So, thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
I'd just like to congratulate, uh, Tuck, and actually, I served with Tuck on Chelsea's Association to Save Homes, which was known as CASH. That started in 1972, so Tuck has given a lot of years to this community, and I just want to say, thank you, Tuck.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was my pleasure to serve with Tuck Willis on the planning board for five years, and I can honestly say, he's someone that I tried to emulate. Um, he, he took things very seriously, tried to do his homework, and of course, he's a, he's a wealth of knowledge, uh, and, uh, one of the best people I know in Chelsea. He's really a fabulous guy, and, uh, I wish him all the luck in the world after so much public service. I mean, uh, it, it, it's really, uh, it's really astounding that someone has this dedication to this, uh, uh, to this city. And so congratulations, Tuck. Thank you.
Counselor Recupero and Counselor Brown.
Mr. Tuck is a great guy. You'll know him when you see him, just because of his great big mustache. He's a good guy. He's been living in Chelsea for a long time, and he's done many good things. I wish him a lot of luck. The city was ha, a nice place for you to have him. He's a good guy. Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, uh, I'm a little old, so a lot of you guys probably don't remember Raleigh Fingers. So Tuck reminds us of Raleigh Fingers, because he has this mustache that my colleague is talking about. But I just wanted to congratulate Tuck for a long-served, well-done job here. Um, I've been to many planning board, uh, meetings. I haven't been to them all, but I know every time I went to one, he was there. He was prepared, he was knowledgeable, he took his time to, um, answer questions from councils or just, um, residents that wanted to know what was going on and what was transpiring. Um, his wife and him are very nice, um, folks. I met his wife, his wife has the same name as my mom, so liked him right from the beginning. But I also, um, thank Tuck for his work, what he did with the theater community. Um, he was very active in the theater community. If you go down to the Winter Semit Club, in the theater programs, he was always sitting there, supporting that theater drive and supporting what folks, young folks, who wanted to do there. So I want to thank him, wish him well. Um, I would be remiss if I did not thank him for the work that he served and, and the work that he provided us. And remember, those jobs are not paid jobs. Those jobs, you don't get any stipends. You volunteer your time, you volunteer your mind, and you go out and you try to do the best decision, make the best decision for the people of Chelsea. Thank you, Tuck. Thank you.
Seeing no other speakers, that resolution passes under suspension. We'll now move on to the next resolution introduced by Counselor Lopez regarding Terry and Joe Inglam. Whereas Terry and Joe Inglam, originally from Medford, Massachusetts, and Illinois respectfully moved to Chelsea and have been here for 49 years, whereas Terry and Joe Inglam are the proud parents of Jennifer and Jason, and are now the grandparents of beautiful grand, grandson. And while living in Chelsea, Terry and Joe were members and founders of the Community Enhancement Team, founded in 2007. The Community Enhancement Team was involved in distributing, distributing recycling bins. And whereas Terry and Joe were also members of the Beautification Committee and the Neighborhood Developers Block Party Committee. Terry and Joe spearheaded the initiative to have the Marlboro, 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 Garden, which was the dump site, and is now the Marlboro Sunflower Garden. And Terry has been a clerk poll worker, and Joe has been an inspector poll worker for the elections through the city's clerks' elections department. And whereas Terry and Joe Inglam will be moving to Greenfield, Massachusetts, to be closer to their daughter and grandson after 49 years. Therefore be it resolved that the city of Chelsea and the Chelsea City Council wish to recognize Joe, Terry and Joe Inglam for all their work that they have done in the city of Chelsea and the commitment and love and respect they have given this community. Introduced by Counselor Ennio Lopez. Counselor Lopez.
I would like to adopt under suspension, and I'd like to speak on it, please.
You have the floor, Counselor Lopez.
Thank you. It was a pleasure to, to present this to Joe and Terry. I want to thank you for all the work you have done in the city, for all the, all the time that you've always been involved. I want to express my gratitude and appreciation. They have done so much for the community, and value, and I value them in all they have done for, for the community. I met Terry and Joe when we were doing a neighbor circles, which I don't even remember what year it was. Uh, I met them at that time, and then we got involved, the Community Enhancement Team, and since then, they have been working a lot in the community. Cleanups, picking up cigarette butts, doing flowers, doing everything. And I just want to thank you for everything you've done, and I know you guys are leaving Chelsea, but you are always welcome to come back. Thank you. And I would love to ask for a five-minute recess when we get a chance to present this to them. Thank you.
After all the speakers, Counselor Brown.
Okay. So Terry and Joe, my first place when I came to Chelsea was 90 Marl, 90 Marlboro Street. So I got my first few of them. Joe, oh my God, uh, always been a tough guy to look at, a tough guy to understand, but once you get to know him, once you get to know his character, he's firm, he's soft, he's fair, and he's very polite. So, thank you for being you. And Terry, um, we go a long way back. So we, we started a lot of initiatives, a lot of organizations, uh, but you've always, even when Joe was going through something, you were still out there working, holding the fort down, doing community, um, work, community volunteering. Um, you guys have been a stellar, um, in our community, a pillow of, of fabric that's really wooped together with you two, with your love and your appreciation. And if you happen to see me in Orange, Mass, that's the next town over from Greenfield, that's me. My cousins live in Orange. So I won't be following you, but I may be there one day. But I honestly, I wanted to say congratulations, thank you very much, both of you, um, for the work, um, that you've done, provided to the city of Chelsea. You've met many friends, and hopefully, uh, before you folks go, you'll get that last barbecue in at the, um, park up here. So thank you again for this, and thank you, Counselor Lopez, well-worthy, um, resolution to bring in for them. Thank you.
Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I guess tonight is also another example of what happens when our community is so, the members who choose to make this community their home, and you're so invested, um, this is what happens. I, I am incredibly touched because you leave us with a precious treasure. Aside from your work with CET, that beautiful sunflower garden that made it to the news, but also has become a beautiful part of that neighborhood, will hopefully outlive all of us, and I see your grandsons here. Is this your grandson? I hope that one day, when you grow up, you return to see the beautiful work and the seeds that your grandparents planted in our beautiful community. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart of all the work that you have done, not only through your participation and your volunteering with the Neighborhood Developers, but also for what you've done for our community and the sort of legacy that you're, you're leaving for our children and the sort of example that you're setting for, for all of us. So I am the neighboring council of, of your district, but I am so, so proud of the work that you've done. So thank you, and I hope to see your grandson, uh, soon here, one day when you grow up, so you can say, this is what my grandparents did. And it, it's a beautiful homage to, to our community, so thank you.
Seeing no other speakers, that, uh, resolution passed under suspension. Um, at this time, we will take a brief five-minute recess so that Counselor Lopez can present the resolution and ask the, uh, Joe and Terry to come up so we can take some pictures in front of the dais. front of these days. All right, everyone. We're now going to go on to our next item on the agenda, which is a public hearing on the city, the council having for the proposed budget for 2022 FY 2026. This is solely the public hearing on the budget, not any free cash allotments or anything else going on the agenda. So if you have any specific top comments that you want to present to the council on the budget process, the city council and my colleagues started the review of the budget, and we had three nights of going with, meeting with all department heads back on the last week of May, and that was all televised. And we had the city manager present the budget along with all department heads and ask questions. So if you have any particular questions or comments on the budget itself, I ask you to step up, state your name and address, and make a comment towards the, the tonight's vote on the approval of the FY 22 budget.
Mr. President, Tom Ambrosino, City Manager. I just am up here to advocate for the council's support of the budget that I presented to you back on May 1st. I think the most significant thing about that budget is that it reflects a significant improvement in our financial circumstances from a year ago. If you recall, a year ago, we needed to use $5 million in reserves to balance our budget. This year's budget proposal is significantly better. We're utilizing less than $900,000 in reserves, and that's typical of how the city has supported its budget with free cash for basically the last decade. So we're sort of back to where we have typically been financially, and that's very good news. I would put out that there is one structural change I'm proposing in this budget, and that is creation of a new payroll unit that will operate under the auspices of the Treasury Department. And my hope is that will really improve the financial efficiency of our auditing department and free them from the tedious weekly payroll work that takes a lot of time and effort of their department. And I will recognize that the budget does include seven new positions, but in several of those circumstances, those positions became vacant through attrition at the end of last spring, in the spring of 2020, and I did not fill them, not because they weren't necessary, but just as a way of trying to save some additional money during COVID. Those are critical positions, and I would advocate they do need to be filled this year. There are a couple of brand-new positions. For example, housing community development, I'm proposing a grants manager. In water, sewer, and drainage department, I'm proposing an engineer, just again to improve the efficiencies of those operations. Finally, the budget does include one new position that we're all looking forward to that the council is fully supported, and that is the diversity, equity, and inclusion officer, and that department appears for the first time in this FY 22 budget. So I would suggest to you, this is a reasonable and responsible budget. It allows us to continue to do the good work that we've been doing for our residents, and I would ask for your support. Thank you.
Seeing no, no more speakers. Seeing all the speakers on the budget, we are now moving on to closing, closing that portion, and we're now, I will now recognize Councilor Leah Robinson.
I'd ask that we take the budget out of conference, and actually on our agenda just happens to be the last four items on a page that we need to, we need to address.
That'll be item GGID 21F90. Order introduced by Council Robinson regarding the following sums classified and designated with respect to each department undertaking of salaries, operations, maintenance, capital hereby appropriated in general fund. City of Chelsea is listed below as in summarize. Then also HHID 21F191, item II ID number 21F92, and JJID number 21F93. We're taking those four orders out of order, and they've already done the first reading. We'll now bring them at this point. Council Robinson, do you have a motion?
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption of the budget.
Are you asking for all four together or individual? Can't, not individual?
No, we gotta do, we gotta do each, each item on a single vote.
Okay.
So it'll be four, four different votes on the approval of the budget.
Please, the clerk clarify why we have four.
The first one is the general budget, $196,552,357. The other three separate items required by the Department of Revenue to show where inside that budget you're spending these particular monies. That's why they're separated. They're not additional monies.
No.
So at this time, if there's, unless there's any questions or comments from my colleagues, please raise your hand. Not, we'll have a roll call vote individually on each one.
Yep.
Right. This is the first one, the general overhaul budget of $196,552,357.
Council Brown, you have a question?
No, I have a question. I want to speak on the budget.
Council Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'll be voting to adopt this budget tonight, this proposed budget we have today keeps Chelsea moving forward in the right direction. As the council president has stated, we had three nights, long nights of budget hearings that we went over. Each department head came before us and gave us a proposal, and they argued, and they talked, and they explained why they needed so much money or so less money for their department. This budget reflects the, as the city manager has stated, a much improved financial situation than we had a year ago. A year ago, and you may have heard the city manager state that we used $5 million of reserve money. This year, we only have to use nine, nine, ninety, $900,000. So I think we are doing the right thing here. I'd like to express the gratitude, appreciation for all those department heads that came out. Mr. Dunn, thank you for being there every night to the end of the night. I'm really appreciating your expertise and your work and your department and your staff. Mr. City Manager, we thank you for all the work, hard work you've put in. I know it's some confrontation moments, but you know, we had to ask those questions. We want those questions answered. You hate, you gave us great answers. All the staff were very resourceful in what their thoughts were. Despite the COVID-19 that we dealt with this past year, we fully can't estimate how bad or how good our budget is. But if you would have been at those meetings, you would have got some understanding that we are in better shape than most communities. Despite what we went through this year with this COVID-19, we have to honestly credit the nonprofit organizations, the Central Latinos, the collaborative, I'm sorry, oh, Central Latino was way back there. The collaborative, the other nonprofit organizations that really pulled together to help this community in a time of need, in a dire time of need. Their actions were more than actions. It was careful, thought out, very produce, productivity of love and caring that reflects our community. This budget is really good, and it provides the services that we want to provide. We're talking about trash today. We're talking about the departments downstairs, whether it's voter registration or whether it's the Treasury's Department. The manager was talking about a new staff person coming on to help with the financial part. And it also adds a division that we've never had, a first-time division that we had, the diversity and inclusion division, which is very helpful. And hopefully, that division or that person will be helpful in helping the city find out where our weaknesses are and also helping us, you know, educate folks in their wrongdoings. So I'm grateful that, you know, we are able to move in that direction. The police, fire, both of them continue to work very hard, the police department. We had counselors that were very concerned about firecrackers, so we had them up, we talked about this. It was an initiative that they stated that they would not only work to address this issue, but also work with the departments, work with the community, work with the residents, and trying to address that. So we thank them for their dedication and to pride, to allow us to have the best quality of life. The fire department, I'm not sure which one of your counselors can disagree with me. They've just been awesome for the last four years. They've come under budget this year, $500,000 less than what their budget was last year. So I think, you know, the city's growing, you know, the city has needs. I did talk to the manager, he tells me these words here, we're in good shape. We, you know, despite the money we just got from the governor, I mean, they were looking at us, they did see what we were going through, and I know we have money, we're going to be able to offset some of that money that we kept folks in their houses, kept folks with food on their table. So, you know, we did it in the right spirit, and in the back, and, and reward, we got rewarded. So I'm grateful to the governor, the governor for looking favorable on us with the $40 million that we got. The budget also encouraged development. I mean, we need to get back into the, to development. We need to move in the right direction to continue to move Chelsea forward, to provide the services, the infrastructures. I know Broadway seems like a mess right now, but it's still, I think it's still a pilot program. So hopefully, we'll get that looked at, we'll be able to have a better route there where we can actually have the buses, the bike lanes, the cars going down, and it won't be as congested as it is, and to ensure the resident of Chelsea a great quality of life. So my colleagues, thank you for attending. For those that attended by virtual, on those three nights, thank you. I know you didn't say much, but we thank you for being on virtual, checking out what we were supposed to do by the charter, which is to adopt and bring forward a budget. So thank you, Mr. President.
Any of the counselors want to speak on the adoption of the budget? Council Robinson asked for a roll call vote?
Yes would be to adopt the budget and no would be to deny it. Councilor Vido absent, Councilor Abzaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
And Councilor Zabat?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, the motion is adopted.
Motion is adopted. Next item on the, as far as the budget?
Next item is the water, is the water enterprise. The total amount would be $9,149,338.
I'll ask for a roll call vote on the adoption if there are no objections. Clerk call a roll?
Councilor Vido absent, Councilor Abzaneda?
Present.
Councilor Recupero?
Present, listen to me.
Yes. Councilor Recupero. Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
And Councilor Zabat?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, the motion is adopted. The next order on the sewer enterprise, and the amount at $13,460,280.
Council Robinson asked for a roll call vote? On the adoption if there are no objections? Call for a roll?
Councilor Vido absent, Councilor Abzaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vega Maldonado?[1461.24]
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor Zabat?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, the order is adopted. Final order on the budget is the free cash usage, uh, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, ninety-two dollars.
Counsel Robinson? Could I ask for a roll call vote on the adoption if there are no objections? Seeing none, seeing no speakers, clerk call a roll.
Counselor Vido absent, Counsel Abzaneda?
Yes.
Counsel Ray Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Zabat?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, and the final order is adopted on the city budget.
Budget has been approved. We'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the public speaking portion. Any member of the guests would like to address, the city council may now speak up, come to the microphone. Please state your name, your, your address, you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan Gonzalez. I live at one oh two Chestnut Street in Chelsea. I'm a thirty-seven-year-old Latin resident. I've been living in Chelsea all my life. I had a child, I have a child, who was part of the summer youth program last year for the first time with the, the collaborative. This was the first experience my child ever had. My child is fifteen years old and suffers from numerous disabilities. I'm extremely impressed with the staff who worked with my son and helped him walk through the step to make him feel wanted, and also challenged him to an extent of the real world. My son chose a program that was extremely challenging. There were days when I would call the staff and feel like he was just going to quit. From what I saw and learned, there's no quitting at the collaborative. They did everything in their power to make him continue to want to work. When you have a child with disabilities, you begin to become concerned about their future in life, and the real world, and what it will look like. If our youth are not exposed at this young age, how can they become our future? This program not only builds real-life skills on our young youth, but it also builds community relationships and prefer, prepares you for work. My son this year was extremely motivated to apply. He was picked through the lottery. My son is looking forward to being part of a program, he's looking forward to working with the youth, he's looking forward to working with his staff, he's looking forward to writing his timesheets, he's looking forward to collect his paycheck, he's looking forward to go to the bank and get his money. He's looking forward to learning from his new program. And so what does that mean to me as a parent? That this program prepares my child for the future. My child has disabilities. When you have a child like this, you begin to think, who will work with your child? The collaborative, I've done my homework. We need the funds. We live in a community that struggles with many areas, but when you think of the future without funding, how can we help? This program allows our youth and gives them the opportunity to learn real adult life, livelihood, and guides them through the future. I personally never thought my son was gonna be able to be in any program, but the collaborative opened the doors. The collaborative has opened my child's mind. These internships is what's making our youth in the city of Chelsea that I've gone in thirty-seven years to become prepared for real-life learning skills. It is not easy out there, and as a parent, I have always had a concern of how do I work with a child with a disability? Again, the collaborative has opened the doors. This year, my child will be looking forward to working with the youth, looking forward to working with the city, looking forward to working with the staff, looking forward to just going to work. He's a special needs child, we need the funds. So that is, I speak on myself. There is another parent who was not able to speak, and I did ask Ms. Angela if I can speak, she did write something. Um, so I am going to speak on her behalf. Her name is Ms. Josania Olivero, mother of twins who have lived in Chelsea for forty-three years and was a part of the summer program Youth as a Teen herself. As a mother of Afro, Afro Latin teenagers, one being high-function artistic, this program has provided them with the opportunity to meet others, learn outside of school curriculum, build community relationships, but most importantly, an introduction of the basic of world. It is a preparedness for our children. Her teens have been talking more about further education after high school. They're talking about investments. These are valuable conversations, their child, as we know, are vulnerable in the under, under disturbed, under deserved community, excuse me. As a part of the program, her children have been able to socialize with other children, learn from each other. The parents are always worried and struggle. This program, as an opportunity, allows children to absorb, share, prosper into adulthood, to help these teens understand and become future, our future. She does not feel prepared, but she does feel confident, and so do I. And I ask that everyone take this into consideration. I speak for myself, I speak for another parent, I've lived in this city, I've worked with many people, but without the collaborative, where is our youth going to be? We need the funds for our youth. And I don't only speak about my child that has disabilities, I speak about all these other youths that are here. Everyone else that's out there, there probably is on a waiting list that wants to get in there and cannot. I hope this message, and as a parent and as a resident, we take this into consideration. This is very meaningful to our city. Thank you, President.
Thank you for having me today, Mr. President. Um, my name is Daniela Perez. I am fifteen years old, I go to Chelsea High, I live in eighty-one Shama Street, and I am part of the program, um, program here with La Colaborativa, and I want to thank you all for helping us out and like, um, and ask you that to increase this help for more students to have this opportunity. Um, as you can see, like, um, hell before, um, hold on. Um, because this, this will help young, um, young youth to learn a new experience and improve their ways, and how before, um, young youth would be like outside, not having jobs, doing drugs, you know, having unprotected sex. And now, since us youth here at La Colaborativa, we changed that, and we want to help other youth that don't have jobs and, and like, you know, want to like work as like the other three hundred, like, um, youth who applied for La Colaborativa to have that experience, so that they can prepare and understand the society, to show what, what is gonna be on in their future, because some kids may not have the opportunity. Uh, like, for example, with kids who don't have, like, whose parents are not working because of COVID or because of something of, um, no importance, or because they cannot, because they don't, they don't have, like, you know, papers or anything like that. I just feel like it, it can be like a big responsibility for the young youth who have to be doing multiple things, having to go to school, having to take care of their younger siblings, to be a, a parent to them while their parents are looking for a job. And I feel like it's a way to like help them out. Like, I as a Latin, a Latina, um, girl, that I'm also helping my parents out with everything. I am also a, a second parent to my siblings, and I try the best and my opportunity to help them. As like, and all these other youth as well, they're trying to help their families and everything, and I feel like the, the youth who are waiting in that list to have also the opportunity to, you know, have that experience of working, like, all of us do, because, you know, like, at some point, they will have to know what it's like to work in a real job, to work in the real estate, to work in a business, or to work in a company. Um, that's all, thank you.
Thank you for having me, Mr. President. My name is Daniela Maldonado. I am fifteen years old, and I am part of the Mental Health Awareness Internship. Working with La Co, La Colaborativa has been an amazing experience. I have learned many important things, such as how to make a resume, how to make a cover letter, how to send a professional email, how to do a formal presentation, et cetera. I will, I got to work with amazing organizations and programs that focus on mental health. I appreciate the opportunity La Co, La Colaborativa gave me, because mental health isn't taught enough, and I hope that the work I did with the other interns will bring mental health awareness to the community of Chelsea. I feel more well-prepared for the real world, because a lot of the stuff that was taught to me in La Colaborativa will never be taught in school. This internship should continue, because it provides youth a chance to improve professional aptitude, build personal character, provides youth with great op- opportun, opportunities, provides youth with soft skills required in pretty much any workplace, and youth get a feel of what work environment is like. I feel so grateful for getting this opportunity, and I hope that other youth continue to get opportunities that will prepare them better for the future. Thank you.
Hello, um, my name is Sharon Fosbury, I'm with the Neighborhood Developers, the Director of Community Building. Um, I don't want to take away from this amazing, um, speech, but I want to take some time to thank you, um, thank you, Counselor Lopez, and thank you for the whole city council for recognizing the Anglans. They are amazing community members, they are amazing. They are your ideal community members who give back to their community. For over forty-nine years, they have sought out countless ways to contribute to their community, to the physical conditions and to the social conditions of their community. They've advocated for recycling, they've advocated for cigarette butlers, they've advocated for trash bag bans. They've countless, they've done countless things to improve the physical conditions of their community. If you go to Marlborough Street, you'll see, you'll physically see the impact that they've had in their neighborhood. They've transformed that place. But the impact that these two people have had goes beyond just the physical conditions. Every person who has interacted with these two people has left to be a better person. Every person has been changed by these two individuals. They are amazing people, and I just thank you so much for taking the time to honor them tonight.
Good evening, my name is Mike Sandoval, I'm part of the Community Enhancement Team, also the Chelsea Beyondation Committee. So I'm very, uh, proud to be standing before Joe and Terry. Um, they've been a voice to our community, especially Sector Four. So, so tonight, we're gonna be looking to, for two new members for the Chelsea Beyondation Committee, right? And the Community Enhancement Team, so anyone willing to come and help us and wanted to indulge with us and go and water the plants. So as of right now, we were able, we're not, we were not able to go water the sunflowers, but we had two members on the other side right now. So we needed to be here with Joe and Terry and to, thank you, let you know how grateful we are that we have met you and to lead the way here in Sector Four. So we're gonna miss you, thank you.
Hi, I'm AFA's, and I'm a fifteen-year-old intern living in Chelsea. I'd like to first start off by thanking you all for your overwhelming support to the youth of Chelsea and all of the funding you've given to La Colaborativa. My experience here has been amazing. I've been able to build up my social skills, make connections, and build up my community with my fellow youth. I believe these internships should continue, because without mine, I would have missed out on a ton of opportunities to help me advance both my, my community and my future career. I've learned so much during my time at the collapse, such as how to handle challenging situations, or just making friends regardless of our differences. Because of this, I feel more prepared in dealing with the real world, and I have mentors and connections that are willing to guide me through the way. I want to ask that you guys increase our funding, so that these immensely valuable opportunities can be expanded to other teenagers and youth just like me. Thank you so much for your time.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Marino, I'm fourteen years old, and I'm the, I'm part of the business internship at the Chelsea Collaborative. I come, I'm gonna speak this really short, and I come on behalf of myself and other interns here, and some that have not been able to be here. So, throughout the collaborative, I've gained many experiences such as how to properly interview, how to properly communicate with someone, how to write a resume, and I would not have these skills without the collaborative. I've grown so much as a human being and as a employee, just through the collaborative. Not many places hire fourteen-year-olds or teens, and the collaborative has opened those doors for people just like myself. I like to just keep this short and just talk about how it's really important, there's many of us just like myself that are really nervous just to get out of high school and not know where to go. With the collaborative, I feel more confident in myself, and I know that one day I will be someone, just from the collaborative. I, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President, for having me here. My name is Jonathan Ressinkoy, I'm fourteen, I go to Northeast Metro Tech. Um, I worked with La Colaborativa since, um, last summer. And if, it was very hard last summer, 'cause due to the pandemic, um, COVID was around, and we had to do remotely. But that was not po, uh, impossible for us. Um, we learned that, um, every youth that worked there last summer learned very strong skills as networking with, um, one another. We learned, um, taking the, um, having in the world of the financial, getting to know, like, what money is made of, like, um, how different, like, if we didn't have the, um, summer, um, employment last year, we wouldn't like, um, those youth that's outside in Chelsea, that they are not in, like, in position of doing nothing. Like, there's a lot of youth who, who needs, like, jobs for help to their families, who are risking doing, like, different stuff that if, like, La Colaborativa hasn't opened the doors to accept those youth that's in Chelsea, like, how would those youth help, like, families due to the pandemic, or like, due to, like, in general? So we ask, um, all the city council members, and including you, Mr. President, to approve the funding that we are asking for, um, for help those youth who are in need. Those who are in the waiting list are, like, having their hope to get in, but like, as there are, like, only two hundred available for those seats, those hopes could, like, go down if we don't accept this funding. So we ask, um, every, um, city counselor to take in, um, in their mind about this funding and how would it, it would, um, help those youth in Chelsea to grow and get the skills that they need for, for their challenges that will be coming as we grow up. Thank you, Mr. President, and hopefully we could get this fund. Thank you.
My name's Paula Lapedia, and I'm a sixteen-year-old Chelsea High student. First, I would like to say thank you for having us, and thank you to everyone here for attending. I would like to talk about my experience as, as an intern at La Colaborativa. I've worked in this internship for a year, and I've had so many amazing opportunities that the average teenager wouldn't be able to have. La Colaborativa has helped me find tutoring for school, has helped me learn things that a basic school education would, would have never gotten close to teaching me. I've learned to create a resume, a cover letter, and more, preparing me for a future career. Working here, I've never felt more prepared for the future. Colaborativa has helped me support my family, including my unemployed father, who has attended high school with the president, who is here today. The ones who aren't, who are in need are no strangers, we are all a family, and we need this funding, thank you.
Um, hello, Mr. President, my name is Rabbinjdia. Um, I am an intern at the Technical Entrepreneurship. Never in a million years, from my family background, would I have ever thought I would be a co-founder of a business at age sixteen. My, all the interns in me and I have created this wonderful business from scratch. We had a loan, and we paid off our loan with our first beautiful launch event that went extremely successful. And I'm so excited that it was an opportunity that I was able to have. My parents have never even graduated high school, so it's crazy for me to think that I'm already excelling and being such a great role model for my younger sister, that she'll have someone to look down and say, she is a co-founder of a business at sixteen, she was able to find a job and help our father, who is unable to work because of the horrible pandemic. I'm sure it has impacted a lot of people. But it's an amazing opportunity that I'm so thankful that I'm able to have. But I know so many members of my community who need this opportunity. So many of us are raising our younger kids, I mean, our younger siblings, and our family members aren't even able to find jobs. It's difficult for them to find jobs, and people aren't even willing to give my father a chance because of his education requirements. So, I'm so thankful that they have taken me in with open arms, and I am able to work with such an amazing, loving community who's able to just be there for me, even though I am so young. It's something I could have never thought would happen in a million years, and I wish that everyone else gets to experience it along with me. Thank you.
Buenas noches, good evening, my name is Sylvia Ramirez, I'm a Chelsea resident. I live at sixty-three Reynolds Ave, and I've been in Chelsea for thirty-plus years. Um, I am here to speak in behalf of two things. One is, um, I am, I am a little bit disappointed about the situation that occurred at twenty-two Willow Street in Chelsea this weekend. I know it's the second incident, and I feel that, uh, we as a city needs to step forward, and, uh, city councils as well, to prevent these type of events happening in our community. Um, uh, I learned about what happened through a parent whose child was involved in that incident or in that place. And me as a parent, I no longer have teenagers, but if I had, if I had a teenager, I will take it to heart, and I will say, we need to do something about it. So I just want to say those two things, that thing. Then the second thing is that I want to say that I, um, I really think that it's important to recognize that our Chelsea Police Department works really hard, and we have at least, um, I feel I have a good partnership with La, La, uh, the Chelsea Police Department, and I know many of them, even, uh, police officers who are, who were a youth when I ran the Summer Youth Employment Program for the city, or when they were playing football, or they were a cheerleader. And now I see them in the force, which is a great, amazing, um, success stories. However, um, I don't feel we have enough police officers that are working from Wednesday night to Sunday night. So, the city needs to, um, think about the importance and the budget that the police department needs to be allocated in order to get enough police officers to truly, truly be working from Wednesday night to Sunday night, especially during the summer. Um, I don't think that we have enough officers, and that is a perfect example of what happened this weekend, which was a repetition of the weekend before at twenty-two Willow Street. So that's all I have to say, thank you for your time, Mr. President.
So good evening, everyone, muchisima gracias. I never thought that I was gonna be standing, um, in front of the city council with cloths all over my pants, but it was cleaning there, at the food pantry, and I didn't have enough time to change. So I apologize for looking a little bit messy. Pero miren, le quiero dar la gracias por el tiempo de la pandemia. So I really want to thank all of you guys in the different ways that you supported the Chelsea Collaborative during the pandemic. This was something that, muchisima gracias, hovene. Um, this was something that we never knew what we were gonna do and how to act and stuff, and many of us stepped it up, and that's what makes the city so unique. I have to highlight two things. So, on, um, on Saturday, I was in my house, I couldn't go, I had reflex, I couldn't go to sleep, and I get a phone call at three-thirty from, uh, one of my staff, they had a gathering, a birthday party, and they left the birthday party, there were two members of the staff and one family member. And they left the party, and when they were driving down Washington Avenue, they found a woman with a two-and-a-half-year-old baby sleeping in the bench right on, um, Ruiz Park. That bench is right outside, the bench outside, because that park is locked at nighttime. And she was sleeping, she was intoxicated, and the staff called me and said, Gladys, we don't know what to do. And I said, don't worry about it, let's get her in one of the hotels, and, um, I'll be there, and then I remember that I'm a coward at nighttime, and I don't like to go out by myself. So I'm like, guys, pick me up here, and then we go, and then we go and look for hotels. So I went door-knocking, literally knocking on these hotels, and they were all closed, because they don't accept anyone, um, after, after twelve o'clock. And these are hotels that I have accounts with, because we're always putting people in hotels. So then my, my last option, I had called the police department, um, and there was no answer, so I then called- So I then called my son-in-law, who's a police officer. And I said, Jonathan, somehow, I called the police department, the six-one-seven-four-six number. There was nobody. But I knew that there was something happening in the city of Chelsea because the few police officers that we had in the streets, I saw them going around. Like, I can hear there was something happening elsewhere. And what I'm here to tell you is that when they showed up, they immediately, the fact that I was able to knock again in one of the hotels that I had already gone with the girl in my hands. And they allowed me immediately. As soon as I took the police officer, the woman was crying because, of course, she was intoxicated. She got kicked out of the house where she lives at three o'clock or something because they had an argument with the person who owns the apartment. So they kicked her out with her daughter. So anyway, so as soon as we went with this police officer, and although the woman was immediately like, please don't call Immigration, don't do this. And we're like, don't worry about it. These are friends, these are partners. You have nothing to worry about. They immediately allowed us in the hotel. I then went to the Twenty-Four Walgreens in Riviera, bought diapers and stuff because the baby was a mess, total mess. And what I'm saying about and what I'm sharing this story is that this is the aftermath of the pandemic. This is also the reality of the of that blanket of poverty that this pandemic lifted, right? And that we need to figure out ways that we can all work together and know the reality of Chelsea, but also the reality of our police department. I tell you just the fact that I had a police officer that I went and I, right, I thought I was Gladys Vega, right? Threw my name, that didn't matter. I said, I have an account with you. That didn't matter. I have a three, I think it's two-year-old. My mother didn't, was not able to give me the the actual name because she, the age, because she was that intoxicated. But what I, why I'm sharing this is because we need to figure out a way that we acknowledge the work that our first responders and the men in blue do, especially in an era of pandemic and an era of so much hate. And that they're constantly putting their lives at risk. When they were with me, they went because I wanted them to then, and you have to understand, that I wanted them to be the first, the reporters for DSS, the CF. So I wanted for them to be the mandated reporter because I have to work with the family and I want them to trust me. So I told the police officer, please come back because we need to call the, I want to make sure that you follow up with a social worker in this case, because if the baby would have woke up, she would have been in the street and the mom was gone, totally gone. So anyways, and they immediately came back. And when they came back, they told me that they were at a call where they got their tires slashed. There were only two officers responding to a party of one hundred people. So I just want to highlight that we need to put a little bit more respect to our police officers. Not that you don't, but to acknowledge everything that we go through at nighttime, especially weekends. It's an era where the pandemic has been lifted, right? So everyone wants to party, everyone wants to have a good time. You have had everyone, because of the pandemic, pretty much incarcerated. So people are out and about doing wild things. And I really think that from Wednesday to to Sunday, we need to increase the manpower we have at nighttime. And once again, acknowledge also that I think during the COVID-nineteen, we didn't do anything for police officers or first responders. So if we work a little bit hard to get these forty million dollars to the city of Chelsea, because we advocated very strong, just please take care of the first responders. If I even thought of, my juice is going to kill me. But if you don't need to give me one hundred thousand dollars to take care of the people that need, we need protection. We want to make sure that the increase.
One minute, Ms. Vega.
I'm sorry, that the increase, you gave me five, I told you three, but that's good anyways. So I just want to make sure that you guys understand that we are extremely grateful for everything you have done. I know that you have a lot in your plate. But please, let's let's acknowledge that this is the, you know, people are out and about because the the ban has been lifted in terms of the pandemic. The stuff that happened in twenty-two Willow Street, I mean, there were condom, it felt like people were having a party and then going to another room and having lots of sex and substance abuse and underage drinking. And I think that we have worked so hard to make the city better. And we need to figure out a way that this doesn't happen again. And that whoever is responsible, that we investigate and we make sure that they pay a fine. Muchisima gracias. Gracias.
Any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll now move on to our next item on the agenda. Counselor Robinson, are you asking for a request to move out of order? The second readings?
Yeah, if there were no objections, I would move to take the second readings up at this time so we can address the issues that relate to the second readings, if there are no objections.
We have the request out of section eleven. If everyone will go to section eleven and you'll look in your folders, you have the second readings. There are three that we'll be addressing at this moment. If Counselor Robinson, we have the first order regarding the appropriation, the amounts of seven hundred thousand dollars from free cash to account three-five-zero-three-dash-nine-seven-one-zero-zero. COVID-nineteen city funding transfers in the in from general fund, funding to the Chelsea Eat Food Debeccade Program.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption, if there are no objections.
Anyone wish to speak on the matter? Counselor Avellaneda.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Before us, we have the completion, the seven hundred thousand dollars of free cash that was requested by the city manager. And this is to ensure our contribution that was made in addition to what the Shaw Foundation made several weeks ago and also United Way. This program would allow us to continue the Chelsea East program until September. And then that'll end the Chelsea East program. We know that it's been very successful. We know that based on the most recent report on the numbers of the usage that primarily they were used in grocery stores that we expected, Market Basket, Compare Market, both Walmarts and Lynn and Saugus and a number of different local food entities. So there was little to none abuse. It was monitored, the city manager and a third party who was overseeing it, and it just worked. So this will be the last funding. It was an important program, very successful. And I hope that my colleagues will vote in favor so that we can match the funding required by those who donated.
Anyone else wish to speak? Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just wanted to thank the Shaw Foundation for the work that they've sacrificed and also committed to the city of Chelsea, as Counselor Avellaneda stated. The money that we're voting for tonight is money that the Harvard, the Harvard Kennedy School suggested that the program helped us tremendously here in Chelsea. Not only by putting the money into the hands of folks, as we just heard from some of the speakers here tonight, that the folks really needed it. It was something that they didn't take for granted. It was used for the intention that it was given, to help sustain your families, to help sustain your fooding and your needs to help you. Also, what it stated, the school government, Harvard, it stated that it helped our community also. Economically empowered our community because they spent a lot of those, that money in our community. So it got folks out there spending. So it was great that we took a chance on something that folks said, well, you don't know what the folks are going to do with the money. They're going to get the money, they're going to go do this, they're going to go do this, they're going to get their nails done and get their hair done, you know, get their toes done. But they did what it was intended for. So that that again is a credit to our community, a credit to our city manager for entrusting in a program. And also, again, going back to the Shaw Foundation, to come back and give us another second round of grants to help us here in the city of Chelsea. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to say thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? If not, we can move on to roll call.
Counselor Vido absent. Counselor Avellaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor Zabit?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent.
Motion passes. Great. Our next.
The next order under second readings introduced by Counselor Avellaneda. Audit that the city council authorized the appropriation of funds in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars in free cash to the FY-21 recreational culture affairs department youth program for La Colaborativa, Summer Youth Employment Initiative Program.
Do I have a motion? Counselor Avellaneda.
I'll move to adopt on a roll call vote, if I may speak.
You have the floor, counselor. Do you need to recuse yourself? Okay, so as of now, for the record, Counselor Melinda Vega Maldonado has asked to recuse herself. Great, thanks for clarifying that for the record.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I speak tonight and to ask my colleagues to support the appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars of free cash to the Summer Jobs Youth Program that so many youth and mothers came to talk about tonight. I was actually surprised in the beginning of the budget process when I inquired to third-party contracts. And was, I learned that the contract or the amount that was provided to the Summer Jobs Program this year was only a hundred fifty thousand dollars, thereabouts. Now, many of you don't know, it's actually in the past been higher. I don't know why it dipped so low. And the origin, the origin of the Summer Jobs Program, it was at one point a city program. It was run by the city. But during receivership, somewhere in the shuffle, it was done away with. You know, they figured they'd cut expenses wherever they could. And this was a, you know, one of the the cuts, unfortunate cuts made. And back in two thousand one, the then, the Chelsea Collaborative and other stakeholders were trying to stem youth violence. We had a lot of information about our youth joining MS-13 and various different gangs. We're trying to stem the violence. And again, we reiterate, you know, Jay Ash brought back the Summer Jobs Program and entered a third-party contract. Rather than make it a city program, said, let's just hire and do a third-party contract with then the Chelsea Collaborative. And I myself have tried it so many different ways, through either the Laca Festival or Carnival or whatever, to raise money for this this program because I think it's important. I benefited from working for my father. Some would call it was enslavement. I knew the value of having a job. But many kids in this neighborhood, this city, don't have that opportunity. They don't have that benefit of, you know, a job there waiting for them after school. And which is why I'm a big believer in it. And the realities are that I've owned a small business. I know the reluctance as a small business owner to hire for just a couple of weeks a youth. It takes time, effort, energy to train somebody to see if they want to, they can work for you only so that they only work for that short period of time. So right away, many of our youths are have a disadvantage to getting hired because the employer knows, you know, why am I going to put this effort when they're leaving me? It's seasonal, I'm not going to do it. The other part of this all is that our very youth are competing against adults in this community. We live, we live in a community with many, with low unemployment or people with low education, and they are not going out and all doing tech jobs. No, they're all working the essential jobs. Eighty percent of our population is working those retail jobs. And they're competing, and that's the competition that a teenager, a youth, has. So again, when I'm an employer, who am I going to hire? An adult who I know that can squeeze forty, sixty hours a week? Or, you know, a number of youths who I can only get eight hours? So predominantly, they lose when they're competing for these jobs. So they're left, again, with bleak outlook and high needs. So it makes, it makes total sense that we would support our own youth. We would support our own job program because we know they're not going to have, we can't say, just get a job at McDonald's, just get a job over here. They're not going to get it. And we heard from a mom, I did not know about the story up until she told me this a couple of weeks ago, how her child was someone who had, you know, was had a learning disability and was fearful. And there were times when this, where this individual felt so bad about themselves. Said, oh, no, Mom, I'm not going to go to get a job, you know. There's something wrong with you. That's the mentality some of our youth have, that they think something's wrong with them. The fact that this program is out there and can help them and instill confidence. And think about what would have happened if they had gone to their first job and gotten fired because of their situation. What would have led to that youth? Instead, he had a great experience and now he's looking forward it. Complete different direction path. And that moment in life is going to alter that path of that young gentleman. So I say, you know, our former city, city manager, Guy Sanigate, once said, and it never stuck, it always stuck with me, show me how you treat your elderly and youth and I'll tell you what kind of city you are. So how do we treat our own youth? If we're not willing to throw a minimum of this two hundred fifty thousand dollars to our own youth, who do you think is going to step up to the plate? No one else will. We got to take care of our own. And this is what this one hundred thousand dollars, additional one hundred thousand dollars is. It's us taking care of our own because we know no one else will. So to my colleagues, I ask you, please, give them the funding that they had many years ago. Give them this hundred thousand dollars so that our youth in that waiting list, I was here on the lottery, that waiting list of two hundred more youths waiting for a job opportunity will get that call and be told they have a spot. Thank you.
Any other counselor? I see Counselor Recupero.
I believe that youth programs is the best thing you can do. I can attest to that. My grandchildren went to that program and they became better people. They enjoyed having their first jobs. And I believe that when you invest in the young people and you teach them and you show them what it is to work and earn a living, they will become a better and productive people in life. And I can say that because I seen it firsthand with my grandchildren. So this is a good thing to give to young men and women of our city.
Counselor Brown, you have the floor. Counselor Brown.
Thank you. Madam Vice President, I'll be supporting this initiative to give the hundred thousand dollars. I'm not sure if any one of us will be voting against it. But by listening to the youth today should have just concrete and made it clear how passionate, how thoroughly invested they are in these summer jobs. And you know what, honestly, as Counselor Avellaneda stated, this is what these jobs have been about all year, all along. Summer jobs for Chelsea youth. I think I might have missed one, but every child that came there said they were a member of the Chelsea High School. They talked about that. Some of them even gave me their address. This is what we're supposed to be doing, investing in Chelsea students, giving them this opportunity to work, to earn a living, to not have to depend on drug dealers or other kind of avenues out in the street, but a righteous living. These folks work hard. I was over, two weeks ago, they were celebrating the youth program. I was passed there this weekend and they were doing a car wash, making money, staying out of trouble. They got good direction. You know, I don't know why it was down. When Roy told me about it, I was like, wow. I remember it used to be two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With the money that we got here, this is a no-brainer. We're going to get a return, we're going to get a return on exactly what Counselor Recupero just stated. They're going to become better citizens, they're going to become better folks in our neighborhood. They're going to go out and do good things. So I want to congratulate those young kids that were here, especially this young lady here, to pour her heart. And the others, you saw their posture, you know. They really wanted to try to explain as best as they could how important it meant to them. And I think it's important for us to show them how important they mean to us. And I think it's important for us to show them how important they mean to us. Thank you.
Any other counselor wish to speak? Seeing now, we move on to roll call.
Counselor Vido absent, Counsel Officer Nada.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
And Counselor Zabat.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed, one absent, one recused.
Great. We move on to the next order.
And the final order is the order introduced by Counselor Evergeneta. Audit that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of $75,000 from free cash to the FY 2021 Housing and Community Development Contract Services account for appraisal and consulting services on the following properties. All Suffolk Street, 46, 50, 50, 52, 68, 72, 74, 76, 78, 90, and 98, and 100 Suffolk Street and 212 Congress Ave.
What is the wish of the council? Counselor Recupero?
I'd like to send this to conference.
You'd like to move this to conference?
Yes.
Do we have any objections? So it be it, we move this to conference, the request by Counselor.
Under suspension.
Under suspension?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, now move on to the next item of the agenda. We'll go back to our regularly scheduled program communication, I'm sorry, the approval of the minutes. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
I made a motion to adopt the minutes under suspension if there are no objections.
Counselor Garcia asked to adopt the minutes of the last meeting under suspension. Any objections? Seeing none, so moved. Next item is communications from the city manager. We have a communication received from city manager Tom Aberzino regarding FY 22 water and sewer and trash rates. Dear councils, I'm writing to provide you with the advance notice of the anticipated water, sewer, and trash rates for FY 22. The proposed new rates are as follows. The new water rates are $5.74 per 100 cubic feet for tier one, $7 for tier two, $9.05 for tier three. The increase is five percent for tiers one and two and eight percent for tier three. The sewer rate, the new sewer rates are $9.56 per 100 cubic feet for tier one, $10.43 for tier two, and $12.82 for tier three. This increase is just one percent for tiers one and two and three percent for tier three. Combined rate for residential customers who are under 1,000 cubic feet per month and pay tier one rates, the combined water and sewer rate would be $15.30, a 2.5 increase. Trash rate, the city proposes an increase of trash fees by eight percent. The new FY 22 trash rate will be $36.46 monthly for residential property and $172.01 for commercial buildings and mixed-use buildings. Owner-occupied units remain exempt from this fee. The new rate sheets are for FY 22 are attached along with supporting documents. Please note, the city remains cognizant of the economic impacts raised by the COVID-19 pandemic. However, some rates increases were essential this year. The NWR rate changes, charges rather, to the city for FY 22 increases by 5.5 percent. Nonetheless, we have kept our local increases than less than half of that amount. As for trash rates, even this eight percent increase, we are not fully recovering our trash costs from this fee. Our proposed DPW solid waste budget for FY 22 is just shy of $2.5 million. Yet assuming this eight percent increase, the city will collect just $2.3 million, leaving a significant deficit that must be subsidized by the general fund. I will be happy to attend a subcommittee talk to further, to talk further about these rates. The public hearing will occur in early July. What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I make a motion to accept and file, and we move this to conference.
Counselor Garcia, Vice President Garcia asked us that we accept and file and move this to conference. Any objection? Seeing none, so moved. Next item on the agenda is communication received from city manager Tom Aberzino regarding illegal dumping. Dear councils, I'm writing in response to the recent city council order requesting information on illegal dumping in the city's enforcement efforts. In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, illegal dumping of debris on public property carries serious penalties. On the Mass General Law Section 270, I'm sorry, Chapter 270, Section 216, this is a criminal offense. Further, the penalty for the first offense is a fine of $5,500, with a fine up to $15,000 for each subsequent offense. Further, if a vehicle is used in the commission of this illegal dumping offense, the vehicle may be seized by police and not released until all fines are paid. The enforcing authority under these statutes is the local police, not ISD, although the city can, by a majority of the city vote, give enforcement authority to its public health agents. As far as I know, the city has never granted our public health agents such authority under this section. In addition to Mass General Law, Chapter 270, Section 16, there is another Section 16A which grants the police the option to pursuing a purely civil remedy for illegal dumping violation. Under 16A, the fine is just $20. Although the penalties for illegal dumping can be severe, it is often very difficult to prove this offense. In many cases, the dumping occurs at night, and the cameras cannot make adequate identification of the individuals or the vehicles involved in the crime. Even when dumping occurs during the day, we often have difficulty making identification. For this reason, at least in my tenure during the past six years, we've never been able to pursue a criminal complaint under Section 16 or even issue a civil violation under 16A for illegal dumping. Despite these difficulties in areas where dumping regularly occurs, we have increased camera coverage, installing signage warning of the penalties, and continued to aggressively investigate when we discover any illegal dumping. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and follow communication and suspend. No objections.
Seeing no objection, that communication has been accepted.
Yep. Communication from the city manager, FY 22, FY 26 financial projections. Dear councils, as you know, the city charter requires that each year I prepare a long-term financial forecast of city revenues, expenditures, and the general financial condition of the city. I did include with my FY 22 budget submission a five-year financial projection. I've attached to this letter an updated version. I've also included a PowerPoint presentation on this long-term financial forecast. Although not required by the charter, I'm happy to work with the city council to select an evening to make a public presentation on this five-year financial projection prior to the end of the fiscal year.
What is the wish of the council?
Accept and follow communication under suspension, and somewhere later in the year, we could have a conference on it.
We are moving this to conference at TBA, to be determined time. Next communication received from the city manager, Tom Aberzino, regarding gifts for the books, for books to Historical Society. Dear councils, Arnold Dramak and Joshua Resnick, authors of the book Turbulent Years in Chelsea, wish to donate copies of the book to the Historical, Chelsea Historical Commission for free distribution to the residents of Chelsea. The books have a value approximately $3,000. A copy of the donation letter is attached. In accordance to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, I'm requesting the city council formally approve the acceptance of this gift. A draft order is attached. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and follow communication. There'll be some coming up on the new business.
We'll accept the communication under suspension. We'll have another order, a new order on this later on.
We have the Charlotte Waste Collection by DPW. Dear councils, I am writing in response to a recent council order requesting that the city once again consider the cost of having the DPW provide solid waste collection services for the city. The city carefully considered this issue at the council's request in the winter of 2019 and determined based upon a financial analysis that the city would likely pay more to absorb in-house trash and recycling pickup, and that taking on this work with our own crews would not noticeably improve service to residents. Copies of that letter and financial analysis are attached. I did have the DPW update the financial analysis based upon current figures. As you can see, the numbers have become closer, mostly because the contract for the outside trash contractor has increased considerably. And there is now some sentiment among DPW leadership that the city could provide at least equivalent, if not better service, and over time save money. At this point, my suggestion is that we reevaluate the situation early next year and then make a decision as to whether to pursue in-house service. If the council were to authorize this change, the transition would require at least eighteen months of preparation, similar to the absorption of the water sewer drainage department. That means that any in-house service would not commence at the earliest until sometime in fiscal year 2024.
What is the wish of the council? Counselor Recupero?
Under suspension, and I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, Mr. Counselor Recupero.
I believe in the near future, every city and town is going to have to have their own trash truck or have to pick up their own trash because trash is getting so expensive, and each year it keeps going up and up and up. And they say that it's not feasible for us to do now, but it will be within a couple of years because the trash ain't going down. As you can see, earlier, our trash fee increased, and that's only increasing a little bit. Imagine, we used to have a company named Russell, and they took care of it. Now we have a new company. When the other company comes in after this contract, you don't know what this company's going to ask. So if I read some of this correctly, the city manager himself says within a few years it's a good thing to have maybe trash collection. And I believe that it is. I believe that we can have just as good a service as any, as these companies we have. Maybe it wasn't feasible before because the companies charged a lot less. But now, the companies charge a lot more, and the recycle is not what it used to be. The recycle costs you four times more than it used to cost you before. So if you put all that together, isn't it better for us to take our own recycle, to take our own trash? And I believe that the city itself can probably do a better job than the companies. I don't know how long it will be before we all have to, but I see right now, the majority of the cities and towns are collecting money for the trash fee. We had a trash fee for years. Now all the other cities and towns are following suit. So if they're following, that means that this trash is going sky to the roof. So if we were pioneers of charging people money, as I call it, we might as well be the pioneers to go back to the old days where you have your own trash truck, like they used to have when I was a young man. The trash truck would come, and we'll pick it up. So I don't know, I hope that sooner or later, the city manager will come back to us in the near future and say, yes, it was a good idea to have our own trash truck instead of just keep increasing our trash fee. Because the trash fee is definitely not going down. It's going to go sky-high, and then the citizens will pay twice as much. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Seeing none, moving on to the next communication regarding notice of residency waiver for Zachary Bromin. Dear councils, I'm writing to notify you of my intentions to grant residency waiver to E-911 dispatcher Zachary Bromin. Mr. Bromin has relocated to Wilmington to be closely with, to his special needs services provided for his son. Mr. Bromin hasn't been employed as a E-911 dispatcher for more than five years. In accordance to the Administrative Code, Part Four, Section 1.12.02, I request that you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days. What is the wish of the council? Counselor Brown asked that we accept and file the suspension, seeing no objection. That moves. We have a communication received from the city manager regarding notice of residency waiver for Vicenza Goodwin. Dear counselors, pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section 1.12.02, I'm writing to notify you, it is my intention to hire Ms. Vicenza Goodwin, 241 Sargent Street Revere, for position of part-time ESOL curricular coordinator and grant her a waiver from the residency requirements set forth in the Administrative Code, Part Four, Section 1.12.01. Mrs. Goodwin's resume is attached. This is a community development block grant-funded program position. The part-time ESOL coordinator position has been open for many months. Mrs. Goodwin is a first-qualified candidate who has applied. Mr. Goodwin, Mrs. Goodwin previously worked for Chelsea in a similar capacity in the late 2000s. In accordance with Section 1-1.12.02, I request that you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days. Any comments, any waiver? Next communication is a communication from city manager Tom Aberzino regarding imminent domain taking out a waterfront parcel for a park. Dear counselors, in a recent council order, you requested that provide you with another plan for acquiring by imminent domain the land and pilings in the vicinity of 215 Marginal Street for the purpose of creating a waterfront park. As I outlined in my May 11, 2021 letter, the imminent domain process starts with appraisal. In this case, given the uniqueness of the waterfront parcel, my administration believes that there's, that the required appraisal would require some special expertise. Accordingly, we think to be on the safe side, we should set aside $15,000 for this appraisal work. Accordingly, if the city council wishes to proceed with consideration of this private property for imminent domain taking, a free cash appropriation in the amount of $15,000 for appraisal work is necessary. I have attached a draft order for your review. What is the wish of the council?
Suspension, there'll be something coming up on the new business.
We have a communication from the city manager, Tom Aberzino, regarding request for the approved, approval of the union contracts with police patrol officers. Dear counselors, pursuant to Section 4-3-1 of the Chelsea City Charter, I am writing to request the city council approval of the cost items of the new collective bargaining agreements negotiated to police patrol officers, New England Police Benevolent Association Incorporated Local 93. There are two contracts. First is a one-year contract for the period July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. The second is a three-new-year contract for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. Copies of the memorandum of agreement are attached. The memorandum outlined the changes to contract terms. The most significant from the city's perspective is a change in new Article 27B of the three-year contract that allows the city to require body-worn cameras. This language is identical to the language negotiated for such cameras with the police superior officers. The first one-year contract has no percentage increase. Instead, it provides each patrol officer with a one-time $1,000 bonus for FY 21. It also increases the detail rate to $60 and adds to the holiday pay provision for the new state holiday of Juneteenth. Three-year contract for FY 22, FY 24 contains the major financial benefits, mainly in the form of annual raises. The amounts are as follow: FY 22, 2.75; FY 23, 2.75; and FY 24, 3% on July 1, 2023, and a .50 on January 1, 2024. Identical to those increases negotiated with the superior officers. The total cost of the wages increases over the four years is approximately $1.2 million. I respectfully ask the city council to approve the cost items of these two contracts. The bonus payment FY 21 would require an appropriation of $78,000 from free cash. Copies of the proposed orders are attached. Counselor Robinson?
Accept and follow communication under suspension. There'll be something coming up on the new business.
Next order on the communication, next communication from the city manager.
FY 22 budget order. Dear councils, attached, you will find the proposed order for the FY 22 budget prepared by Ed Gunn.
Counselor Robinson asked that we accept and file communication.
You have the second theme, communication under suspension. There'll be some coming up on the new business.
Communication received from the city manager, Tom Aberzino, regarding year-end financial requests. We have the following approval of PEG Access 22 budget in the amount of. Cable, Chelsea Community Cable.
Mr. President, I make a motion that you wait the reading and just read the bullet points.
Approval of PEG Access FY 22 budgets in the amount of $241,000 is Chelsea Cable, Chelsea Community Cable Television. School Department, $90,000, and City, $130,000. We have the approval of the Community Preservation FY 22 budget, which was 10%, 10%, 10%. We have the salary deficits funded by salary reserve transfers equal in the amount of $25,000. We have other deficits funded by free cash in the amount of $534,819. We have the reauthorization of resolving funds. Elder Affairs, $1,000; housing, community development. Elder Affairs, $1,000; Housing Community Development Tax Title foreclosure revolving, $100,000; Public Library, $20,000; Emergency Management, $30,000; Inspection Services, $30,000; Community Schools revolving, $100,000. Item number six, prior year expenses, no funding required. List of obligations. Donations, no funding required. We have two gifts, reading, raising a reader, cost of thirty, with a cost of $3,330, and a donation from Mr. Albert Tubedow. For these reasons, and the detail above, I respectfully ask the city council to approve all of the requested actions. The required orders to effectuate these requests are attached. What is the wish of the council?
On the suspension, there'll be something coming up on the new business.
Seeing no objection, that moves on. We'll have a couple of orders to represent those, those amounts read. We have a communication from permitting and land use director, John De Priest, regarding the planning board recommendation letter on proposed zoning amendments. Dear councillor Avellaneda, at the duly posted regular meeting the Chelsea Planning Board held on Tuesday, May 25, 2021, the board reviewed and proposed zoning amendments relative to the density in R1, density in R2, mixed-use overlay district, and R2-to-BR map amendment. The R1 district, as proposed in the letter as Planning Board dated 21, amendment one, the board expressed concern and voted 9-0 unanimously to seek additional public comment. The board, on amendment two, the same vote. On the R2, as proposed in the letter sent to the Planning Board, amendment one, the board approved unanimously 9-0 to recommend the council approve the amendments. Amendment number two in the R2 district, the board voted unanimously 9-0 to recommend the council approve those amendments. Amendment, amendment number three, the board voted unanimously to recommend that the board approve that amendment also. On the mixed overlay district, as proposed in the letter sent to the Planning Board, the board voted 9-0 unanimously to recommend the city council approve that amendment as proposed. In the R2 BR map amendment, as proposed in the letter sent to the Planning Board, the board expressed general support for the proposed amendment and voted 8, 1, 0 to recommend that the council approve the amendment as proposed. What is the wish of the board?
Accept and file a communication on the suspension, move it to a conference, and a public hearing will be held on Monday, January 21.
The, the communication was accepted. We will be holding a public hearing on the, the amendments on our June 21 here, public hearing. And we will also have a subcommittee on these proposals.
June 16.
June 16.
Be the conference. The public hearing will be on June 21st before a regular meeting.
Here you go. Swat it with this. Um, next communication, we're reading on to unfinished business, no committee reports. Oh, I'm sorry. We have a communication from the parking commission. We have, dear ladies and gentlemen, in accordance to section 6.3, the Chelsea City Charter, the following actions were approved at the June 1 Traffic and Parking Commission. Item number five, to change two market, two parking meters in front of E-911 to from two-hour maximum to 10-hour maximum based on the requested submission of Public Work Commission Fidel Maltiz. 911, okay. We have, I think that's, what is that, Washington Avenue, I'm sorry, city manager, is that the Washington Avenue?
Two, right.
So from, they want from two hours to 10. Item number seven, to approve the consolidation of two bus stops at Cary Square based on the request by Thomas Quitramami of the Massachusetts MBTA, basically, Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority, to consolidate two bus stops at Cary Square. Item number nine, to post a handicaps sign at 131 Spencer Avenue based on the application submitted by John Karen. Item number 11, to post a handicaps sign at 156 Bellingham Street on the application submitted by Claudio Mojica. Item number 16, to approve the temporary shutdown of Second Street between Broadway and Minutimit Street based on the request submitted by Ben Kears of Department of Housing Community Development. Item number 17, to post a handicap sign at 135 Chestnut Street based on the application submitted by Wanda Muniz. We need a motion to adopt on this?
Communication on the suspension, no objections.
Is there any objection to adopt?
Okay. Unfinished business, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to unfinished business.
We have an audit introduced by Council Robinson for the second time on the unfinished business. Audit that the city council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of $200,000 from free cash to the FY2021 DPW Structures and Grounds Contract Services account for park maintenance work.
What is wish of the council?
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption. We did have a conference here early this evening to address this issue in regards to the parks. I think it's very important that we do address this issue and approve our parks, so that the community can get better use out of our parks, as opposed to always have to walk in and pick up trash and clean it up in honor for our kids to be able to play in the park. Therefore, I'd support this $200,000 fee to hire a contractor to address this issue.
Anyone want else speak on this? Seeing none, Clerk Colerole?
Council Fido absent, Council Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Recupro?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
And Council Zabit?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, motion is adopted. We move on to new business, Mr. Chairman. First order on the new business, audit introduced by Council Robinson, audit that a subcommittee conference be held with veteran agent Francisco Toro to explore the possibility of having a Memorial Day Celebration Committee.
What is wish of the council?
Accept and file this communication, and we'll move it to a conference at a later date. And the reason that I'm asking for this conference, I think we can do a little better in planning our Memorial Day celebrations. I think for the last 20 years, we've come here to have the kids present the knowledge of the three schools named after veterans who got, didn't make it home from the war, but also during the Vietnam War, there were 11 Chelsea residents who had, didn't make it home from the war, and they're on the, they're on the stone outside, and I think that, you know, we need to pay homage to World War I, World War II, and all members who came from Chelsea that did not make it home. Thank you.
Next order introduced by Council Lopez, request that the city manager strike DPW Commissioner and his team to complete a thorough examination of all street cleaning signs in the city, add proper signage, especially in areas where there is a lack of signage or no signs at all.
What is wish of the council? Council Lopez?
On the suspensions, there's no objection, would like to speak on it.
Seeing no objection, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, I've been noticing that there's some streets, they have no sign, street cleaning signs at all. My question is, if this street had no signs, no street cleaning signs, what happened? If a person is parked there and get a ticket? But I think it's fair when they do clean up the streets and they get a ticket. So I, Harton Street, for example, from Central Avenue all the way to Compaire, there's no sign, the street, the street cleaning signs. Then there's also Pearl Street, I think there's Congress, from Congress all the way to Chestnut Street under the bridge, every avenue from Broadway all the way to the bridge, no signs. So, do we all clean those streets, or what's going on? So, I, I want to see if they can put some street cleaning signs. And probably there's more streets around the city that don't have a street cleaning sign. Thank you.
Council Recupro?
If there's no street signs that says to clean, what happens? If those people get tagged and don't know when to switch? So they should be able to put signs. If they don't do that, the people are gonna get tickets and don't even know when to move their cars. So that's, if there isn't, the city should go and put it, because those poor people are paying fines when they shouldn't pay fines.
Move on to the next order.
Next order introduced by Council Recupro, audit that the city manager hire a consultant to look into the feasibility of building a community center and further provide the findings to the Chelsea Council.
What is wish of the council?
I'd like to adopt under suspension. If there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objection? Okay, we have an objection.
Objection to the first reading?
Objection to the first reading, or?
What are you objecting to?
To just the under suspension?
If they want a roll call, it's fine.
Okay. There has to be a roll call vote, so move, move to a roll call vote?
Yes.
And then speak on it?
I moved to a roll call vote.
Okay, move to a roll call vote, you now have the floor, you can speak on it.
Can I speak on it?
You may have, yep.
For many years, I've been trying to put a community center. No, I've been trying. The people of this city deserves a community center. They have community schools, but the community schools cannot handle what all the citizens of our city need. For one thing, community schools, you have to go to them and you have to ask, to write on a piece of paper if there's room for you to go there. In a community school, you don't have to do any, a community center, you don't have to do anything. The only thing you have to do is get a little card saying you live in the city of Chelsea, and you can go there. Anybody can go from any age, any group, whatever they wish, they can go. And the only reason that we need one, because the community schools are only there for a certain time. After the schools open, the community schools don't exist anymore. So shouldn't the city deserve a community center like everywhere else? I believe not only do the young man, the old man, the men, the women, all of them, they all deserve to have a place they can go. A community center does many things. I grew up when at a community center. What it does is it brings people closer together from all over the city. You get to meet people you don't even know, but there you get to meet them, you get to understand them, and you get to appreciate more what your city is. Community schools, for years I've heard, they do it, but they really cannot handle it. Community schools cannot handle everybody. By us looking into building a community center for the whole city, like in East Boston, there's three of them alone, four, in a small section like that. Why can't we have one? I think it's time that the city should explore, at least look into it, and see how much it will cost and how good it is. It will pay for itself partly in the long run, because people will be checking. You're gonna have to pay some money to go to it. So why not even give everybody an opportunity, instead of just going to community schools? Yes, the community schools serve their purposes. It's a good thing, but I believe that we need a community center. And my fellow councilors, I believe that you should at least explore the opportunity of having a community center, because it's a good thing for the community. It brings the community together. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Councilor Rodriguez?
The reason for a roll call is, yes, I agree, we need a community center, but I don't believe the city manager should look into hiring a consultant for this issue. I believe him and his staff are well-prepared and knowledgeable on the subject. I believe the manager spoke many times, numerous times about, you know, the need of it, and I just feel like we can use this funds for something like, you know, the youth program or something else, and I don't think it's needed. Yes, you know, I do agree on the community center, but I just don't agree on the hiring the consultant.
Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Councilor Avellaneda?
I agree with both, both colleagues. One, the need to just get a response from city manager on it, and two, I think the city manager can do so without an appropriation, so maybe we can get a response without an actual appropriation, because if the city manager chose to hire a consultant, that, that request for funding would come with it. So if we state right now, it's our preference to just have current city staff give a response in this regards, whether it be community development or from our, via Carada, can give us an answer on this, it could go in that direction. So, I'll vote in favor of both, because right now, there's nothing attached to it that is monetary and an appropriation.
Anyone else? Okay, we move on to the motion properly before us.
We have a roll call request, and a yes vote would be to request the city manager to give a finding on the, on the funding. Council Fido absent? Council Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Recupro?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
No.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Zabit?
Yes.
Nine in favor, one opposed, one absent, motion is adopted.
Great, we move to the next order.
The next order introduced by Council Avellaneda, audit that the city manager, in an effort to create affordable homeownership opportunities, present to the city council a plan of action to either take by eminent domain or friendly taken, the two families located at 115 Willow Street, which is currently bank-owned.
What is the wish of the council? Council Avellaneda?
Approve, I'm sorry, that the adopt under suspension? If I may speak on it?
Unanimously under suspension, if there are no objections. Do we have any objections? Okay, Council Avellaneda, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The, for those of you not familiar with this address or the property, it is actually a two-family on Willow Street, very close to the corner at Bellingham. It is currently boarded up and in the possession of a bank. It is a problem property, and when I acquired about it, we saw that, that they're, the works, they're in the works of possibly putting it back on the market. It's my experience that when properties like this are on the market, typically you have a contractor, a developer, who will come in, buy it at a price, and then, and then flip it and end up being at a much higher price, obviously, to make a profit. Unfortunately, this flipping ends up being at a, at a price that is prohibitive. I've had experience with clients who are pre-approved at $350,000, make a bid to buy one of these problem properties, and then find out that their loan doesn't work for this, and that when the mark, when the property comes back on the market, it's at $550,000, which is of course $200,000 more than this person is even qualified to get a loan for. So essentially, we're losing these opportunities. It's my hope that, as you've seen me in the, the, the last efforts here, create homeownership opportunities. This is a great opportunity here. We used to have a problem property program where the city would somehow get the, the property in receivership. An entity like Chelsea Restoration would take over, get the work done, and then sell it to a first-time home buyer. And that's what I'm hoping we can do here, is be active rather than reactive, have the city, again, take it either by eminent domain or whatever process, have it put in receivership, fix it, and then make sure that it gets to a Chelsea first-time homeowner. So we will have other examples of this. I believe city solicitor told me that they're working on a list, and this is just one that I caught on my own and wanted to get the ball rolling. So I hope my colleagues will support it.
Thank you, councillor. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, we move on to our next order.
Introduce by Council Avellaneda, audit that city council hereby accept, send foods and gifts of books from Arnold Jarmack and Joshua Resnick to the Chelsea Historical Commission.
What is the wish of the council?
Adopt on a roll call.
Okay, Council Avellaneda moves to adopt under roll call. If our clerk can explain the vote.
A yes vote would be to accept a gift and, and no vote would be to deny a gift.
Uh, the gift.
Gift.
Gifts of books.
Gift, it's a book.
I have a, I, so far, we're, we're gonna move on the way we're in.
Okay, yes vote would be to accept the gift. Council Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Recupro?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
And Council Zabit?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, motion is adopted.
Okay, we now move on to the next item on our agenda.
Next item on the agenda is audit introduced by Council Avellaneda, audit that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of $200,000 from free cash City Council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of $15,000 from free cash to FY '2021 Housing and Community Development Contract Services account for appraisal services.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to a second reading.
We move to a second reading. Thank you, Counsel Avellaneda.
All of these, about 15 of the next orders.
We have 15.
Counsel Robinson.
Orders introduced by Counsel Robinson that were described in the early communication from the City Manager. He's requesting that we take them all on a, just to move them all to a second reading as a whole?
Yes, if there are, if there are no objections, there are, I can count them off, it's about 22 of them, I believe.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12.
So it'll be from, from letter G.
G. To FF.
To FF.
Basically, it's all of them left.
Well, no, to EE.
EE.
I'm sorry, to DD.
Yeah, to DD.
To DD.
DD?
Yep.
Yeah, because.
Those are the orders, the financial orders.
Right. She'll have one.
We're moving all those items to a second reading?
Second reading, yes. Any other, the two that are left?
So the next item we're going to be introducing is EEID 21F88, which is an order introduced by Counsel Robinson regarding the Chelsea City Council accept the gifts of the public library to support the library in the amount of $150,000 from Albert Tubedell. Counsel Robinson asks for a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on the adoption, if there are no objections?
Please allow our clerk to get that order.
Get organized.
Organized, we're moving much quicker.
Roll call by Counsel Robinson, okay.
Counsel Robinson asks for a roll call on the acceptance of the $150,000 for the library.
A yes would be to accept the gift. Counsel Abadina.
Yes.
Counsel Ray Coopero. Counsel Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Zabit.
Yes.
Nine in favor, not opposed, two absent, motion adopted.
Next order is an order introduced by Counsel Robinson that the pursuant to Section 3.5 of the Chelsea ordinances and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53A of the Master of Law, City Council hereby accept the gift of a reading from a raising a reader to Chelsea Public Library in amount of $3,330. Counsel Robinson, what is the wish?
I ask for a roll call vote on the adoption.
Seeing no objection, the clerk call roll on the acceptance of the gift of $3,330. Larry Bird, 3-3.
Counsel, let me see.
Larry Bird, 3-3.
Counsel Abadina.
Yes.
Counsel Ray Coopero, absent. Counsel Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
And Counsel Zabit.
Yes.
Nine in favor and not opposed, two absent, motion adopted.
All right, that concludes all our business today, everyone. At this time, I'll ask if we have any announcements. Counsel Judith Garcia.
So just one brief announcement. I know the summer is here and a lot of our master requests have been lifted, and we're so eager to go to downtown Boston and the Seaport to support and show up to these restaurants, but I highly recommend and invite all of you to really stay local. Stay local, visit some of our restaurants here who are working so hard with city staff to provide outdoor seating and make it a beautiful experience for all of you. So stay local, eat local, support local businesses. Thanks.
Any other announcements? Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to let the residents to know that the on-ramp on Arlington Street leading up to the Tobin Bridge is now open, so it's another way of getting directly on the Tobin Bridge heading over into Boston. They opened up last week. I have since traveled it. If you come up Arlington right by the school, you take that left, it still kind of looks like it's closed, but you can actually narrowly get up to the Tobin Bridge. So I know we have a lot of congestion going on, a lot of work being done, but if you're on the Arlington Street, you're trying to get to Tobin Bridge, you have now an open passage up, okay?
For those who are looking for something local to do, something fun to do, the carnival is coming to town. June 10th, this Thursday, the Fiesta Show is a very well-known carnival operator that does the Topsail Fair, Marshall Fair, the Big E, and many of you probably seen them at the Riviera Movie Cinemas. In the past, they've come to Chelsea, in most years, they've been at the Parkway Commons. This year, they're bringing a, what I was told, a decent operation, a little bit larger than what's usually at the Parkway, and they're going to be at 295 Eastern Avenue. Many are not familiar with that. It's at the railroad tracks across the street from the car wash on Eastern Ave. Parking will be available thanks to the school department, who was kind to offer the parking at the Mary C. Burke Complex, and proceeds of the carnival will benefit the Chelsea Summer Jobs Youth Program. So I encourage you all to join, hope for good weather, and see you at the Midway Games. Any moments of silence? I'm sorry, June 10th, this Thursday, to June 20th, the Sunday, so 10 days, two weekends in a row. Moments of silence? Counsel Robinson?
A couple, actually, Chucky Galatas, who was a custodian at the Williams School for a lot of years, who retired a year and a half ago, passed away recently, and also a local resident, James Balloon, who originally lived on Spruce Street, has been there for a number of years, also passed away. I'd have a moment of silence in their honor.
Thank you, everyone. Enjoy the rest of the night.